Good morning, everyone. Good to see everyone here. It's now time to call the City of Franklin City Commission to order. At this time, I will ask Commissioner McQuary to open us up with a word of prayer.
Dear Father, thank you for this day and beautiful day that you provided for us. We're just so thankful to have the beauty that you provide us. I also want to pray for all the first responders, the police, fire, EMS that take care of the community. We also pray that you bless anyone that's sick that's going around now. It seems to be a burden, and we ask for your blessings on that. Please come to this meeting today and help us make us the right decisions and do things that's going to please you and that we do what's best for our city. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner McQuary. At this time, we will open up to hear the public. And we'll move on to, no one here, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the April 14, 2025 regular meeting. And I think everyone's probably had an opportunity to look over those. Are there, do I have a motion to accept those? We have a motion by Commissioner Powell.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. Are there any further questions or comments concerning the minutes? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, aye. Any opposition? And those minutes stand approved as read. Okay, we will move on to recognitions and we'll, I believe Trent has some.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here today and I'm proud to announce that Zach Chandler is our first employee to attend the four-week CDL class at Sky TC. He passed, so he's officially got his CDL. And some of you may know, this class at Sky TC, the city donated money back in 2018 to help build the road course and things like that. So I wanted to come here today and recognize Zach being the first C employee to pass the four-week CDL class and test. So please help me congratulate him.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, I just add to that, that was back in 2018, it sounds like, but this is the first graduate, probably one of many we got going through, and it's going to be local. But the City of Franklin designated $10,000. Franklin Simpson industrial 40 was $10,000, Bank and Trust was $5,000, and the Sky TC did $62,000. But the other thing is the city also paid for the engineering to get it done. So, you know, 2018, we were thinking forward and, you know, now we're going to pay the benefits of having somebody local here for that training. So all of our employees coming on board basically will be attaining CDL. So that's just a nice thing to think of it, finally seeing that come to, come full circle.
And that's great. We're reaping the benefits from it now. So that's, that's great. Thank you, Kitten. We'll be moving on to community services. And under community services, this discussion regarding South College Street property, and we're, we're glad to have Gail Wilkinson here with us this morning to come and speak to us somewhat on that and, and what she might, might have in plan, have planned for. So Gail, welcome, and you've got the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me okay? So my name is Gail Wilkinson. I'm originally from Southern Indiana and then lived in Chicago for many years, and most recently moved to Portland, Tennessee. So Franklin is actually the closest town to us. We shop here, we come here quite often and love the city. And while we were building our property in, it's a small cabin in Portland, and we stayed in a bed and breakfast here in Airbnb, we were walking around down College Street, and so I did fall in love with this house about a year and a half ago and have since spoke, spoken with the current owner, Mr. Stephen Bowers, about potentially purchasing it. And what I would like to do with the property is renovate it into a bed and breakfast, so restore it and renovate it into a four-bedroom, four-bath property that also has a number of sitting rooms on the first floor and a shop as well. So as part of my research to do that, I've had to look into things like zoning to make sure that the zoning works, also the, working with the Historic Preservation Society, making sure I can ensure the property, understand the taxes, and then the last thing is parking. And so one of the things that I spoke to Mr. Powell about is making sure that I would have the appropriate parking there. And so just to go into a little bit more detail about what the property would, would be is upstairs, three bedrooms and three bathrooms, on the first floor, one bedroom, one bathroom, and then the number of sitting rooms that I mentioned. The zoning here in Franklin requires that it be one of the R1 through R4 zones. It's currently zoned commercial. And so in order to do that, I would have to work with Mr. Monday and an attorney to rezone it. If there is a bed and breakfast, it requires one parking spot per room, so it would be four parking spots, and today on property there are two. There is also a garage that's not in use. So the question that I have for you, one, is do you have any questions for me? Because my goal, if I do this, it would be a labor of love, it would be a very expensive project. It would not be to make money, it would be a not-for-profit, and it would funnel into another business that I, I just started, a not-for-profit dog rescue, and then go to rescue dogs. I'm not looking for this to be my income stream. I'm very fortunate that I'm at a time in my life where I want to focus on things that are really impactful, and I think it would be great for the City of Franklin. I'm willing to spend my time on it. I have done this three other times with renovations, one of which was the 1919 bungalow in Chicago. And I've always wanted to do an older one, and once again, just fell in love with this, with this town and with this property. So if you would have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those. And once again, I have not purchased the property. I do need to make sure that the parking and, and I would have the support of the city before I move forward with that transaction.
I might just make a comment. First of all, it's, I refer to it as the Crowdest Property. They were friends of mine. I've been in their house many, many times, and I love that house. And I think, I think most everybody in Franklin is truly interested in preserving that piece of property. And actually, there was a bed and breakfast, actually about three houses right below you. So I can't speak for planning and zoning, but I really don't think there would be a problem getting zoned properly for you personally. And I say I can't speak for them, that's their, that's, that's their job. But I would certainly love to see something happen with that. And I think most of our citizens in Franklin, and particularly that whole street, would like to see something have, become of that. And as far as parking, I would leave that up to Kitten. And the chief is here today too, but I really don't think, I mean, there's, actually, there's parking just right beside you that's being used for parking. And as far as parking spaces, there's some across the street in front of you, and then right below you, there's, there's two or three parking spaces that, that are striped off. So that's so much for me, but anybody else that I speak to that.
I just have one quick question. Obviously, you know, the properties in the historical district, have you spoken with anyone from the Historical District Association?
I spoke with Lee Ross Denwitty. What I understand is anything that's considered maintenance on the exterior, so if I were to repaint it white or keep the same windows but refurbish them or get a similar roof that looks the same, those, those things don't need approvals. But if I wanted to, let's say, add a historical color, appropriate trim color, I would need to get approval from the committee, and they're willing to work with me on, like, this light green looks good, but dark purple doesn't, and things like that. If I wanted to change the structure externally, that would require approval, which I don't plan to do. If I wanted a fence, that would require approval, it has to look appropriate for the period. Anything inside, it does not require approvals, from what I understand.
So with that being said, you know, working with the historical district, you don't have any problem with some of the, the rules and stipulations that they have for, you know, for the renovation process?
My goal is to keep it looking the same. I, I would want to keep it white. I probably will add a colored trim to it, but something pretty minor and period appropriate. I would like to get the windows refurbished. The roof, I'm not sure. I might have to get approval because I don't know if that material is still available, but I can, I can imagine that would be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all right.
As far as, yeah. No, no. Well, let me, first of all, if you buy that house, welcome to the neighborhood. My office is right across the street from you. And we have one of our other neighbors that live there as well. I would caution you, I, I worked in that building, it was a law firm years ago, and I worked there for several years. I would caution you that with Corey Morgan's law firm now open back up next door, I don't have a lot of in-and-out traffic other than generally these guys, but, or I meet over at City Hall, so I'm not too concerned about that. But with his law firm and other things in the area, sometimes parking is a little congested. I think Jill could speak to that.
I think you did the parking behind it. Because there's no lines there, which I always wanted to talk about.
Jill brought up the point where Scott interrupted me, but Jill, you're right. But you're so right, there is, there's those streets wide enough to add some additional parking, and I'm glad you brought that up. And I think we'd add four comfortably. And the other thing that what we do is, with people that lives down there, we can, the other thing in ordinance is no overnight parking, but we usually provide a permit or something that, that, you know, that we know that you have somebody staying there and it's, it's okay. So Mayor, Commission, I think we could accommodate that because the street's plenty wide enough. And I'm like you, I never thought why we didn't put spaces there. Maybe it's because of new businesses coming on that we were holding off on it, but I think that's something we can accommodate by adding spaces and also the overnight things as far as permit, knowing if you have somebody staying, that, that's communicated and, and we don't tell anybody or anything, we haven't done that. But that's some of the things cars left there contingently gets traction, so.
Right.
But Mayor, and to Commission, if you wanted me to look at the adding spaces, I'd get with Darryl or whatever, and we can explore that option.
Yeah. You know, the street is wide, I mean, it, it's fairly, it's, it's quite wide. It narrows right up above, well, about where your house is, but I mean, there's space down through there that I think, as, as City Manager said, I think we could, I don't see any problem accommodating to three-acre spaces for you.
Would you be concerned about the parking on the street for your, for whomever made, that's not an issue for you or anything like that, you're just trying to accommodate parking?
My, my goal in doing this is just to make sure that it's done in collaboration with everyone. And so I assume that as we go through the renovation process, things would come up like this that I hadn't thought about or that other people hadn't thought about, and that there's a solution somewhere, but I'm willing to be flexible and, you know, for the, for the guests, like, I come from Chicago where we had to walk many blocks, so right out front of the street is amazing.
Well, I, I think those things can be accommodated, that you, that you requested. I don't think it's too, I don't think it's asking much for.
Love to see the house fixed.
Yeah, I don't think it's asking very much. I think those are doable things that we can do. Just, just hope everything goes through as planned.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it. I will, I will let Mr. Bowers know that it seems like the city is excited and that I, if he's willing to transact, I'm willing to transact. And just so you know, the timeline, I had been talking to Mr. Denwitty about his firm potentially doing it because I have now the experience of doing one old house, and I would like a company that has done old homes and plaster and all that stuff, and he has. And so he can't start working on it until the end of the year, which matches, it's a good time for me to start anyway. But that, if we started the renovations at the end of '25, the goal would be to have it in operation by the end of '26.
That's great. That's great.
Okay.
We hope that's what happens.
Thank you.
We're good. We thank you for coming, and if you have any further questions for us, contact City Hall, City Manager.
I would like to take you to lunch, Mayor, so I can hear about the house and the Crowdest Sisters, if you're willing. Okay. I'll follow up.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to general government, and under general government, this discussion or possible action regarding the Franklin Simpson planning and zoning fees, and John Chandler is here to come and speak to us about that. It's concerning the Simpson County building, he's the Simpson County Building official, so. John, I think you will speak about permits.
Yeah, it's just the electrical fees is all we're talking about.
And it, it's mainly concerning commercial, commercial building.
Correct, correct. It's all commercial. Right now, we don't have a minimum in our ordinances, CDR County, so the commercial fees are 1.3% of the contract amount. That is for the permit and inspections. This is the first time we've really ran into it since I've been here, that we've got a commercial project, and the fees on it, the permit would have been $15. So usually, one inspection and the office fee is $125. Most of the time, and even on this project, it's going to require two inspections. So usually, anything you do on commercial, you go through two inspections. So that's why we just came up with a $200 minimum fee, just to save us from having a $15 permit.
How long does it usually take you to do an inspection, tip of one?
I mean, to actually do the inspection? 15, 20 minutes, but then you've got the report, you know, paperwork that goes along with it. So you can usually figure an hour on an inspection. Yeah. That's on a easy inspection, quick easy, usually an hour.
So you, you're requesting a minimum of $200?
Yeah, so what, what I requested, and I kind of gave two options. First one, I said we need to just do commercial fees of 1.3% of the contract amount, minimum of $200. And then we did add that any, any additional inspections will be $75 per trip, or just say a minimum of $200, have your word. The county voted to say $200 minimum with $75 for any, any additional inspections. And that's the same on residential. When you get a permit, you pay for, most of the time, you pay for four inspections. If there's any more, it's $75 per inspection, so.
Has the county already written the ordinance?
I don't know if they've written it or not. I would assume they were waiting on this meeting and then you and Sam get together to make them identical.
Just let me know, depending on what they did.
I don't think they've written anything, but the ordinance or the, they voted on, I got an email, and this is what the judge said, the vote was set, was to set commercial, industrial, electrical permits at 1.3% of the electrical contract price with a minimum fee of $200 plus $75 for any additional inspections required.
I would recommend that we mirror whatever they're going to do, just so we have one consistent ordinance.
That sounds good.
You do a like motion?
Anyone else have any further questions? I'll, we need a motion. I would like to take a motion then to accept, accept that proposal that John has just presented, that mirrors the courts. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Powell.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor, aye. Any opposition? And that motion carries, John. Thank you.
If you would, just email me and let me know who needs to draft. Okay, I'll give us that. Thanks.
Okay, and next, under general government, will be discussion or possible action regarding appointment to the PNC Board of Adjustments. And I will take that as, most of you all know that Kenneth Utley was on that board. And due to, due to some health reasons, Kenneth resigned from that board, and that, that caused us to have to start seeking else, out someone else to serve on that board. And as you know, Kenneth served our community well. He did, he, he served for many years and, in the community on various boards and organizations, did a good job, and we really appreciate his time that he gave to serving on the Board of Adjustments. But as I just said, his resignation came due to, he felt has some health issues that he probably needed to move off of that board. And we, we have a really valuable person that's willing to take Kenneth's place and serve on that, the unexpired term that he, that he was serving. And, and at this point in time, Sharon Birch is who, is who is willing to take that position. So any comments before we, as for motion? I would like to recommend the motion to appoint Sharon Birch to the Franklin Simpson Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments to fill the unexpired term of Kenneth Utley, which expires on December 31, 2027. And I will put that in the form of a motion.
Make that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
That would be a second, though.
We'll have a second by Commissioner McQuary. Is any further comments or questions? All in favor, aye. Any opposition? And that motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, I know I'm delayed with this. I just thought about it, you know, I don't, I don't have any, I just want to just think publicly, thank Kenneth Utley for his service that he had. You know, he's been a long time, as you may mention, he's been a long time elected official, and he's served on various boards, and, and just want to thank him for his, his commitment that he's had for being on these boards. And just thank him.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Okay, moving on, under general government, will be discussion or possible action regarding proposed ordinance amending the water tap fees, and Scott's going to speak to that.
Well, I will briefly. I wrote it, but I didn't engineer it. Trent, would you mind to come up and explain this to the Commissioner?
Yeah, Trent.
Okay, Trent.
Talking about throwing somebody under the bus, there you go, Trent.
I can, you may go ahead and talk. What it is, we were just cleaning up some of the language in, in this ordinance. In the previous ordinance, it said $1,800 for a sewer tap plus a $350 meter drop. And also, it didn't mention anything about like duplexes. And on duplex, we usually do one tap and just split that tap and connect both sides of the duplex to one tap. With the ordinance, what it was saying is they're going to have to pay $3,600 because that was two connections. So I'm just trying to clean up language. So with the duplex, it's not $1,800. We added in a little bit to cover our costs, cover our labor for the other side, but it's not the full, it's $3,600. So this was just to clean up language and have it down on paper, get it cleaned up.
So this $3,200, is that, is that, is that, that will take place rather than charging the double?
Thirty-six, it'll be a 32.
It'd be discounted just a little bit because you're going to, yeah, okay.
That's correct.
We'll be there doing it anyway.
And I believe the previous ordinance said, plus you'll have a $350 meter drop, that $1,800, and that $3,200 includes that.
Okay. How was it before?
I can't, prior to.
We, we redid this, I don't know, has it been a year ago now, maybe?
Yeah, about a year.
And I think we just flubbed the language. We wrote it similar to what the sewer was, but this was water taps, and it just didn't get caught that we needed to handle that. I think it just said 1,800 plus the 350, which was, that part was just wrong.
Luckily, we looked back and we did not charge anybody $3,600 in this past year.
We did not?
We did not.
Good. Okay.
Yeah, that's what me and Carol was talking, we got to make sure if we did, we had to reimburse it, but we did not.
Okay.
Okay, we'll need, you're looking for two sponsors for that, right? We have Commissioner Powell, and we have Commissioner Stewart. So you have your two sponsors, Trent.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to discussion or possible action regarding a resolution approving the municipal road aid, and Kitten will speak to that. And this is something, this is just something we do every year. We have, we're, we're.
Yes, Mayor, you can see the, it's the municipal road aid agreement is between the city and Frankfurt, and you can see that the money's allocated, it's about $238,000. And there's this resolution that's basically holding 3% back for emergencies. So that's about $8,000. So what does that mean is if in case something happens majorly, like stormwater pile collapse or sewer collapse or something that's emergency, this can come in and pay for that gap. We've had that happen a couple of times now, and it's really beneficial when it happens. It's a kind of cooperative type thing, so it's a good safety net for us, especially, you know, with, you're getting a lot of range and a lot of storm drains are really beginning to take toll, but that's the agreement. And the motion is to approve the municipal road aid program to authorize for fiscal year 2025, 2026 to adopt the resolution number B, 2025, and further authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and a resolution for any other documents necessary to participate in the rural municipal aid program for FY 2025 and '26.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion by Commissioner McQuary. We have a second.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Kitten, would you, if you don't mind, and I, I'm sure we've done this before at some point in time, could you explain, because I'm not sure, from year to year, you know, I mean, there's always a question about paving and what needs to be paved, and how do we go about choosing pavement? And I, you know, I've had a conversation with, with Darryl, and he kind of explained that to me a little bit, and I appreciate that. But just for, for the record, since we're getting ready to go into that, could you, could you explain a little bit how that process is done? What time of year it's done as well?
Yes. So right now, the asphalt plants are beginning to open up because of the warmer weather, so, and we have slated some streets to be repaved. But we do an OCI, which is required every year, and it's basically, we drive every street, and I should have Darryl, why don't you talk about that procedure? Yeah, come up there and talk about it.
I don't know what OCI means.
In the meantime, can we get a second? We have a motion, and we need a second.
Do we need a second?
I thought we already had a second, sorry.
Yeah, I thought we did.
Did you second it?
Did you second it?
Darryl made the motion.
Nobody seconded it.
We didn't get a second.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it. You second it, okay.
All right. That's, okay, that's, that's right.
So what, generally, what we do is every year around February, we get together and we do an OCI report. What that is, is we drive every city street in Franklin, and it counts the potholes, the alligator tracks, any street cuts where we've done water and sewer repairs, it counts all that. So once we get all the streets done, then we go back, and you can tell what's good and what's bad by the numbers, you know, the bad places, defects in it. Once we have all that calculated, and we know from Carol how much money we're getting, we'll get a list of the worst streets, how they rated, and we'll meet with whoever that is going to do our work, and we'll go measure all these streets and get a quote, and then we'll go from there and iron down what gets done. But we always try to go from the worst street up. And what I like to do is, I like to try to do at least, depending on how many streets we're doing, one or two out of each sector. That way, everybody that pays taxes is getting the street paved in their area.
And that is a percentage, so there's a percentage on every street, you know, so at that threshold. But the one thing that I want to throw out, even though that we have $238,000, that doesn't even touch, I think the city typically is in another couple hundred thousand. So we spent about a half million on resurfacing, and, and literally sometimes that's not even enough. So that's only a portion, probably half of what we need to do. So, but it's, it's required every year, it's part of our budget, so, and it's a good question.
And generally, what we do is we'll do, after July 1st, we'll try to split that money up, do half of that before winter time, and then do the other half spring. That way, we're not taking so much out of the budget at once.
And you start at the worst and come down is the way you evaluate that, right? Darryl, you start with the worst.
Yeah, the worst percentage on the street is how we do it.
Percentage and come down.
We're not just picking the street, it's all done.
And your percentages are like grades in school, they're out of a percentage.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. So if you look at the list, you can see it pretty easily. I will, I will say that we're still working legislatively, and the mayor knows this, he's on the list, let him be with me, on road revenue split, where maybe we could get a little bit more every year, some of this that we have to put in ourselves, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Stay tuned.
Thank you for bringing that out, too.
Yeah, we, we didn't make any progress this year, but hopefully we can next year. Nobody, nobody was interested in it.
Keep knocking at the door.
Any further questions or comments? Okay. Let's see, the motion is to, well, we've already had the motion read, so we, we have a motion and a second, and if no further comments, we'll ask for a vote. All in favor, aye. Any opposition? And that motion carries unanimously. Okay, and we will move on down to discussion or possible action regarding Aiken Avenue stop sign placement, and Kitten will speak. stop sign placement, and Kitten will speak to that.
Yes, sir. You know, we have put a stop sign in basically at the location of church in Aiken, and just had a lot of good comments. So we thought we would just go and see, we, a group of us, Chief Solomon, John Zambrano, Darryl Mallory, Dan and myself, we went down there and walked it, and tried to get a good understanding of what would be the best place. One thing that really popped out is, you know, just to make it a real true four-way stop at North High Street in Aiken, it's really very easy to do. It's a true four-way. Then also talking to the police chief, putting it in the center where we was before, you could, a driver could increase speed up to that point on both. So our thought process is to put a four-way on High Street, and then kind of look in that and eventually put another stop sign on Henry in Aiken. So there would be kind of two stops. Henry in Aiken, is it a three-way, four-way? We, you know, through the other, some trials that we have done, we need to get a school bus out there and see how that turning radius is located. So I know that this has been a lot of discussion, but I think this would be the best recommendation. I like, being this is a change, I'd just like to get the commission's thoughts about this direction.
No, I want to thank you for going back and looking at it, because that's over near where I live, and I've had several people contact me about that. And I, you know, some are for it, some aren't, but they were concerned about the placement, as we're talking about it, and the notifications. But I was driving it again, I drive it every day, but lots of children, especially in that section from the laundry mat down to Aiken, that's, or down to Edgewood.
Yeah.
But I understand the chief's concerns about another one, but only time will tell on that. But thank you for relooking at that, the people who live over there.
We had some parents and stuff come out while we were there, so it was good. It was a pretty day, it wasn't raining. So I think we got good feedback. So before we pursued anything, I wanted to push this out, but like I said, we just thought this was a better direction, and then like listening to the police chiefs, talking about two stops versus one, really would slow down the traffic, because that's the main thing that everybody was really speaking about, was the speeding in that. And Chief, you're here somewhere in the back, but I don't know if you have any other comment or anything.
So I think we need to really look at the new stop sign, whether we do it in Allen or whether we do it in Allen.
Okay.
So importantly, is to make sure that it's put up there above Henry, they have the ability to turn on Henry at that location. But if you're looking at the equal distances between North High and Main Street, and you look at Henry and Morgantown Road, they're about the same equivalency. So it makes sense to have an additional stop sign by there whenever we're ready to do that, just to cut down the amount of speed, because if you get to the stop sign on High, when you're heading west, you have a tendency to speed all the way down to Morgantown, the same way if you're heading east on Aiken Avenue until you get to the stop sign. So putting them opposite ends to equal elevation to the same sense.
So really, it is, put in the motion is create a true four-way stop at Aiken and High Street, and then make a three-way or a four-way stop at Aiken and Henry Street, depending on getting school transportation park feedback.
What's the issue with the buses turning on Henry?
It's a larger turning radius and where to put the stop sign.
From which way? Going eastbound on Aiken? Turn right?
Well, they're already turning on the Henry now, it's just we want to make sure that if we put a stop sign back a little bit back from Henry, that they still have the ability to turn on that. We ran into that over the one on South College.
Right. I mean, it's 1,100 feet from North High Street to Morgantown Road. So I don't know why we wouldn't do the second one now. But whatever.
What was, I couldn't hear.
I don't understand why, it's 1,100 feet from North High Street to Morgantown Road, so I don't know why we wouldn't do the second one now. It's 470 feet from North High Street to 31W, so you're only splitting it by, what, a quarter? Or a third, almost exactly a third, yeah. So I don't know why you wouldn't do the second one, it's 1,100 feet.
Well, that would probably be the end result, so we just wanted to, the four-way stop would be very easy to get going, and then the third way, you know, the other one, getting the bus to locate, get it to mark, it's just a little bit longer. So I would say it'd probably follow within a little bit period of time. But the main thing is, I figured that we wanted to do the true four-way as soon as possible by communicating and getting the stop bars painted, so.
Trent, did you want to speak to that? Were you, I'm sorry, I thought... Scott, do we need a motion for, to approve this?
However, whichever way you go, yes.
Okay.
The commission's who authorizes traffic.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McQuary. So we're doing...
I'm sorry, let me take that back. I made the motion like our chief recommended to do, the one stop now, and after his information of getting the bus out there and making an assessment.
Is that what you recommended?
Pending, yes.
What are your thoughts? Then you said... I don't care about the phone calls, but that's the best thing to do.
I mean, it's up to y'all. We'll do it all, possibly do it all. I mean, regardless, I see what the point is, just because we stopped on the high, they're still going to have a spread for it. So what we look at that day, if we put two of them in there for breaking the road, there's three stop stations, and we should have speed on them.
Roger, do you think we should wait or do it all now?
I think we need to do it right away, unless we're able to publicize it.
Okay.
I mean, how you gonna, how you gonna publicize it?
All I was going to do is when we get ready to put the stop signs up, I'll put coordinate with whoever's going to be doing this prior. That way, we put the stop bars, the stop signs all up at the front, because we're, you know, there's no reason not to say.
Yeah. What are we gonna do to publicize it, though?
Well, if you notice, we have some of those caution sawhorses, the lights that says traffic pattern changing.
Yeah.
So we will put those up at both ends, just to signal that the traffic patterns are changing. But really, you need something on site to get the full meaning, so. Even though that is a good thing, but...
So the motion, if I'm, make sure I'm correct, the motion is to go with the chief's recommendation at this point, and, and...
Do them both, is that what, is that what motion is?
Yeah, do them both.
Do them both. Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bush. Is there any further comment or question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. Okay, we will move on to, under general government, to discussion and a possible action regarding financial reporting format, and Carol, I think, wants to speak to that.
Yep, that's correct, Mayor. I'll try not to bore you too much with the county terminology, but Commissioner Bush has approached me about some reporting he would like to see. I just want to talk through what our options are, what the pros and cons are, and then give you my recommendation, and then we can decide as a commission what you guys would like to see regularly. So on page 44, so starting on page 44 in your packet, I've got some sample reports that we do. Just want to talk quickly through those and let you know what's involved to do those. So on page 44 and 45 is just a detailed trial balance. It's just a listing of everything that has hit our general ledger, which then feeds our financial statements. It's by account. It gives a vendor name, or in the case of a payroll, it says it's a computer check coming out of the system. And you can see not a lot of extra detail, but you do know what account it's in. And this is a very quick report to run, but it's like 417 pages for a full year. So it would PDF it. What Commissioner Bush had asked was, could he get things in Excel? And this report can be exported to Excel. It's about 16,000 lines of data for the full year. And the way it's structured, unfortunately, it's not easy. You can't just sort it. If you sort it, you lose what account, what account description it's in. All you end up with, if you wanted to look at a list of who we paid, you don't have any context to know, am I paying an expense report, am I paying for wages, unless you would know the account numbers. And I don't even think on this one. When you sort it, you lose all those account numbers by line. And to make it in a better format, it's a lot of work on my part, to move things around so that you would have the accurate account number, account description, and what we spent. And then it only gives you the vendor name if it's a payables kind of thing, if it's a vendor we're paying. It doesn't tell you what we paid for. So unless it's intuitive by the account, you still don't know exactly what we're paying for. Makes sense? And then you could sort it and just get, that's what's on page 48, just get what went through accounts payable, but you don't have any account number references, you don't know what account it's in, you have a vendor name and a dollar amount. So from my perspective, that's not very helpful to me. I need to know where things are. Maybe that's not what you guys are looking at, if you just want to see who we're paying. The other options we have, starting on page 50, is just purely a report out of our accounts payable system, which is where we pay, well, you know, somebody sends us an invoice, we put it in the system and pay them. If you run it just a PDF version, it's about 350 pages annually. It gives you vendor description, the date of, that the invoice was entered, and then a check number and amount. My concern is this report does not tie to a fiscal period. You can't go back and say, oh, this first check was dated October 24th of 2023. Well, that's when we got the invoice and entered it. The expenses, our department heads know, it could have been months earlier. Sometimes it takes people forever to invoice this. Sometimes you cross fiscal years where we've had to accrue it because we knew it happened and we hadn't gotten an invoice. So this is the easiest report, probably quickest to clean up in Excel. If you look on page 52, that's where I've dumped that same report to Excel. It's about 10,000 lines for a year. When you dump it, you don't get any headers, it doesn't tell you what the columns mean, but it tells you who the vendor was, and it gives you a description. And to clean it up, you just search for the empty lines and delete them. But you don't know what account it was in, but you do know who it was paid to and for what purpose, and the amount. What we do during budgeting is, starting on page 56, and you may have seen some of this, those of you who've been around a while, this is a worksheet I do for the department heads, and it provides five years of actual data by account number. It's limited to the operating accounts that they're responsible for. So I give Trent, here's the list of accounts that you need to budget for, and here's your historical data. I tell him year-to-date what we've spent, and what our year-to-date, our current budget is. And so then from there, he has access into the general ledger system. He can look up and say, hey, what did I put in this account? And he can look that up, and he does. It takes a while to look them up, but, you know, that, they have that as a resource. Some of the accounts I do detail for to marry the information between the general ledger that gives you the account number and description of the account with the details from accounts payable, but that takes a while. I did the professional accounts and gave two of them, and it probably, for three accounts, it took me at least three hours. It just depends how many transactions are in there, what, you know, what kind of stuff, which account you're looking at. Some are very simple and some are not. And the page 57 is just a detail where we married that information together. And then, you know, once we've set the budget, obviously, we go through all these things in detail in workshops, right? And we go through that, not necessarily by vendor, but any big projects or who we typically use gets brought up in that conversation. Then we use the report that's on page 58, which is a budget status. So it will have the current budget, it'll tell you how much we've spent year-to-date, it has open POs, so how much is already encumbered that we haven't paid for yet. So, you know, we've contracted somebody to come in next month and do a project. We know that money is already accounted for, they can't spend it again. We, they would put in a PO for, if they want to do something extra, and if that PO makes them go over budget, we don't allow that. We say, hey, Trent, you gotta move some money around. He's got other fund, you know, accounts within his budget that maybe he doesn't need all of that this year, and he'll move it to a new line item. If it's something bigger than that, which would typically be an emergency maybe, then if it's, if it's outside what Kitten and I can approve financially, we've brought those to the commission, especially if it's major, major maintenance projects or capital, and we say, hey, like we moved funding from this water distribution over to something else this year, I can't even remember what, that $44,000 project, because we weren't going to spend it there, but we needed it elsewhere, and you guys approved that. So we are kind of operating on, here's the detail at budget time, and then how are we tracking to that? And if we need more money, we have to come back with a budget amendment, and that's when we go through the detail of a budget amendment.
And I believe you've brought us about three or four of those in this past year.
Just two so far.
Carol, if I remember correctly, so it's all, it's all brought to us.
Yes.
Three for what?
Amendments. We've done two, we did the original budget and amendment one and two so far. And we typically do a third one because we will try to prepay some of our chair of community spending, so we have to have another amendment to do that, and if anything else has come up between, since the last amendment.
I mean, it's just insane to me that it's been 35 days since I've asked for this, and y'all can't provide it.
Okay, let's talk about what's happened in the last 35 days. I took six days of vacation. You know, that's on me, but my kids asked me to come, so I'm going to go on vacation.
So you don't have a backup?
Not for this kind of stuff. This is not in our daily...
So an accounts payable, transactions by account, is not a canned report inside Springbrook?
It is a canned report. These are all canned reports, but dumping them to Excel...
So you, you couldn't come to me and tell me this?
I told you this in person in my office, Kelly.
Okay. And I will tell you again, I really don't care at this point, like it's been 35 days. Do you want me to do a formal information request, and then you've got five days?
This would not even be required to do.
That would be a report that's already available. This report's not available.
Which, which part?
The canned part. The canned part, I can run a PDF these you today, but that is not what you wanted. And if you wanted...
You did not give me those options, and it's been 35 days. Why does it take so long to go, here, here's this, here's a canned report, can you try that and see if that works? But that's not what y'all are doing. So when, when is the last time that you provided any of this data to the city commission?
What?
When has this data been provided to the city commission?
It gets, a lot of it provided during budget.
So once a year, we look at what you guys spent, that's it?
And at budget amendments. We're operating against what you originally...
So nobody looks at this to see, like, what you've spent for the last month?
I do.
And you're not, okay, so I'm supposed to trust you? I don't know you.
Well, I think as a commission and as a staff...
I think as a commission, that when we ask for it, we should get it, am I wrong?
Well, it depends on what type of report you want. If it's a PDF report...
You guys are making this so much more difficult than it has to be, and I don't understand why it's so difficult.
If you can limit what you would like, and tell me what that is, then I can give it
So is it, is it not, is it not by ordinance that the city manager is supposed to be doing this on a monthly basis anyway?
Well, I can do it on a monthly basis.
Why are you not doing it on a monthly basis if that's why we have an ordinance for it?
We look at things monthly. It doesn't say we have to...
The city manager shall provide to the city commission a monthly financial report, which shall be submitted on the second monthly meeting immediately following the month for which the report has been prepared. And then it lists what's supposed to be in it. So why are you not doing it? And then the second question is, why is nobody on the city commission not even asking about what you spend?
Ken, I can answer that question. When we do the budget, and this commission agrees X amount of dollars for a certain department, as long as that department operates within that budget, we don't question them, unless there's a variance, which you go over.
Well, I mean, I find this...
I understand what you're saying, but let's be fair. When we give these guys authority to work with a budget, we're not going to micromanage them. That's their job, as long as they don't go over that budget. But on your behalf, I do understand...
Have they ever went over a budget?
If...
Well, I'm sure we've amended them.
If we did, it has to come...
Have they ever went over a budget? Oh, yeah, we've amended it several times.
Which budget did they go over?
Several items. We adjusted. Now, let me finish. I do appreciate you should get your information, but with some of it, they're allowed to operate within their budget. within their budget.
But after thirty-five days, you've not had one single contact with me to be like, will this work? Will this work? How about this? Will this work?
We've had a very.
I find it just amazing that you're supposed to be doing this monthly and you're not doing it, and the city commission is not asking for it. It's crazy.
What you're asking for would not even be what gets done monthly, Kelly.
Okay.
This is not reporting financial.
I'm talking about two separate issues. The issue one is that I've asked for this thirty-five days ago and I haven't gotten it. And then the issue two is, based on this ordinance, you're supposed to be providing this data monthly anyway, and you're not doing it. And then the third issue is, nobody really gives a shit about it and they're not looking for it.
I hope they're offended by that.
How do you feel like it? We, we don't give a shit?
Well, because it's perspective. And my perspective is, and at least seventeen other people's votes, their perspective is, is that it looks a little shady. And by this, it looks a lot shady because it's been thirty-five days and you can't even attempt to try to give me a report to say, hey, will this work? Will this satisfy your requirements? Or nothing like that. And then you guys sit up here like, it's okay for them to just go through and do this, and it's like no issues whatsoever. And like, y'all think it's okay for them to go, I don't know. I can't see the data to find fault, buddy.
You got it.
So what do you want me to do?
I don't, what do you want to do?
I would like to look at the data, some data, or at least somebody to say, hey, will this report work? Will this satisfy your needs?
Go in, Kelly, and sit down with Carol.
Well, I was trying to be respectful because I understand that you are busy, but you could not just send a canned report and be like, hey, is this close?
I would have, but you told me what you wanted in the fact that Excel, and that is not a canned report, Excel.
Okay. So it takes thirty-five days to do it?
From my, it takes what?
Thirty-five days to do it.
She would have to stop everything you're doing.
Everything else I'm doing.
You said the three hours to do three line account numbers.
So you've done this for thirty years, and you're telling me it's that hard that you can't, like, so, like, let's get Springbrook on the phone and, like, see if it's really that difficult. I just, being, like, doing this every day, I find it hard that a software like that is going to be able to, like, not do this.
I have been doing this a long time. Not quite forty years yet, thank you, but.
Well, I thought that's what you said the other day.
I have worked with many software packages, and most software packages for accounting do not give you good reporting. Most, everybody goes to Oracle or some type of other platform to do financial reporting. We don't do that. We dump to Excel, do what we need to do to get the reports we need.
So you dumped to Excel already?
Some things, yes.
Okay.
I don't dump every spending line for the last three years in one file and do all the work. No. I dump the capital accounts usually every month or every other month to see where we are so I can give the department heads an update on what they've spent versus budget. I was doing quarterly reporting to the commission for revenues and expenditures and explaining the variances to budget. I have not been doing that because I am overloaded.
I still find it amazing that we're supposed to be doing this monthly and it's not being done.
I think when we go into budgets, Kelly, and you see how that works, I think that'll help you to understand.
I doubt it. I would, I would.
Let me ask this. So what format then, from monthly perspective, can we give, Carol? Which is?
I'll send you an email by the end of the day. How about that?
Well.
On which one that we probably.
Well, what if it's not doable? That's the thing.
What if, what if, what if life is not this hard, man? Oh, make it a lot harder.
Have you ever worked in an organization this size where you did the financials?
No, most of the organizations I work in are much larger, and we're cost justifying things that you guys are not even cost justifying for a thirteen million dollar organization that's bringing in that amount of revenue. So it, it baffles me how you guys even operate and how you guys are not even concerned about what's actually running through the books. You're just saying, oh, well, they met the, the budget for that year, so everything must be hunky-dory. And I just don't see it that way.
Isn't it something that we're not concerned? I, I wish you would mainly speak on your behalf.
It, it looks on your behalf. I'm not speaking on your behalf, I'm giving you the perspective. So if you don't like the perspective, that's on you. That's not on me. But I'm telling you what the perspective is. The perspective is, it looks real shady.
Okay, we also have.
That's your perspective.
We also have an annual audit, and we, other than.
That's an accounting audit. It's not going to go through that and pick out, like, oh, we cut a tree on this, a certain property. Why did we cut a tree? Did we have to cut the tree? Did we have to pay to cut the tree because it was over a sidewalk? Was it because it was somebody's buddy who owns a rental property? I don't know, but those are questions I would like to ask.
Where do you think we find the information in these things?
It was in data that you sent me in previous years that, that you probably, guys, you didn't think I would find, but I did. So it's those certain things that I would like to look at, and it's amazing that you guys are having a hard time just providing me data to understand, like, that I want to look at it. Like, it doesn't matter why I want to look at it, or how I want to look at it, or what I'm going to do with it. I don't care that it's ten thousand lines. Ten thousand lines is, is nothing.
I care that it's my time.
Well, and I care because I was elected to ask you questions, and I'm asking you questions, I'm not getting answers to them. We can go all day on this. This is not difficult. This is not hard.
I don't even know what to say to that. You're insulting.
Okay.
You're insulting.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
We had this conversation already.
Okay. I'm sorry you feel that way. Did you get the tax stuff uploaded to the address?
I certainly did. I did all my other stuff. Thank you very much.
This is uncalled for. No.
What part isn't called for? The part where you're not going to give data for thirty-five days?
Because Carol has to do certain priorities.
No, I asked, did you get the file uploaded to the taxes?
Very sarcastic.
What does that, no. My, my next question was going to be, what was the problem?
I was using a wrong TCC code because we have two or three, and I was using the wrong one for that option.
Cool. How is that insulting? I was asking her a question.
Because that was a side part discussion you had in, in the.
What does that have to do with anything?
This is trying to get a reporting done as far as what kind of reporting do you want to see?
Okay.
That's where we are. What can we do realistically?
Well, realistically, you can do whatever in the ordinance, thirty-five dot zero two.
Okay, you'd be acceptable with that. So if we send out a PDF.
Oh, no, I'm still going to want all the data, but you should be doing that, too.
But what if we cannot do that? What is this to stop the budget process?
How about you pick up the phone and call me like you never do and say, hey, man, we're having troubles, or we're doing this, or we're doing that, but y'all never do. It's always, well, I talked to you thirty-five days ago, and you said you wanted this, so it's not going to work unless you have this. You never picked up the phone to say, hey, this one right here might be pretty close. Would this satisfy your needs? You've never done that. But hey, it's all my fault because I'm asking questions because you haven't given me anything for thirty-five days.
No, because I told him the day I was so backed up and it would take me a while to look at it.
And we put it on the day's agenda. We would have had it on the last week's agenda, but she was on.
Because you're doing everything you can not to give me the data, and you're trying to say, oh, well, this is easier for me. I understand that. I understand that you've got a lot going on. But I'm still going to ask for the data, I'm still going to want the data.
All right, let's just, for the record, I don't appreciate being called shady.
I didn't call you shady.
Oh, really?
Well, we can go back and look at it, I'm sure somebody will. I said, this whole perception is being shady.
I believe we've had enough discussion at this point on that, so.
Yeah.
Let's move on, and, uh, at this time, we'll ask for public safety. Anything under public safety? Anything under utilities, Trent? Okay. Kathy, I believe we have an ordinance that, uh, it's the first reading, so, yeah, we have one ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have first summary reading today of ordinance number twenty-two-five-zero-zero-eight, and ordinance amending a certain section of chapter fifty of the City of Franklin Code of Ordinances entitled General Provisions. This concludes first summary reading of this ordinance. Will become effective upon passage and publication. A full copy of the ordinance is available by request at City Hall during normal business hours.
And there's no vote required on the first reading, so. Okay, and from there, we will move on to executive session.
Mayor, we can take business off.
We can, okay, take business, okay?
Just read the first two, please.
Under executive session will be litigation, and this discussion or proposed or pending litigation under KRS six-one-point-eight-one-oh-one C. And we have personnel, and that will be discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, disrun, or dismissal of an individual employee or member under KRS six-one-point-eight-one-oh-one F. And also, we have land acquisition, and that will be deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency where publicity would be likely to affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by a public agency under KRS six-one-point-eight-one-oh-one B. And I will need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bush, second by Commissioner Powell. Oh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And we now move into executive session.
You standing here?
And I would like to see, speak to you just a sec, too, by the way, before, yeah, just, yeah, just a moment, yeah, right here. And I would like to see, speak to you just a sec too, by the way, before, yeah, just, yeah, just moment, yeah, right here.
I said motion, Mayor.
We have a motion by Commissioner McCreary.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And we now move into regular session. And I believe coming out, coming into regular session, we have a couple of motions.
Yes, sir, we do. The first is a motion to accept the resignation of Daniel King from the Public Works Department.
So moved. We have a motion by Commissioner Powell.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And any opposition? That motion carries.
And Mayor, the second one is the motion to hire Josh Gent for the Public Works Department.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCreary. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries unanimously.
And I have no reports.
Okay, and from city attorney reports, we'll move to city manager report.
No, sir.
We'll move on to city commission reports. And Commissioner Stewart?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner McCreary?
No, just wanted to give a shout out to the Rotary Club for taking, they started on the Y down on Main Street, beautifying it. What they used to do, we just appreciate what they do for the community.
And speaking of, okay, thank you. Speaking of the Rotary Club, they will be celebrating 103 years, May the first. And we want to congratulate them on that. They do a whole lot for our community, and they're very much appreciated. And I just want to give a big shout out to the Rotary Club on 103 years of service to the Franklin community. Commissioner Bush? Commissioner Powell?
I echo what you just said, and I make a motion with John. Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Powell to adjourn. A second by Commissioner Bush. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We now stand adjourned.